Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. We do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore, on my right is Commissioner Larry Hudgens, and I'm Roma Amundson, County Commissioner and also Chair of the Board. We, assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office and Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office and that's it. Will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. A Jan. 9 and 10 minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 11th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the rule.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through October 18th, 2016.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number three is a special presentation, Regional Prevention Coalition Annual Presentation, Sandy Morsey, Regional Prevention Coalition Director.
Okay, well, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This would be our annual informational visit with you, and we appreciate your time. I've asked Teri Voski to join me. She oversees the community coalitions within Lancaster County. So, I'll give you more of a system perspective with prevention, and she'll talk more about individual strategies that we're utilizing in Lancaster County. So you have in front of you, the first piece would be, every year, remember that the substance abuse prevention block grant dollars are disseminated throughout all the counties in Southeast Nebraska, which Region Five serves, and that is based on their strategic planning. This past, if you'll recall, three years, Lancaster County has received about forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty, and that has actually been to support Teri's position due to the fact that Lancaster County is receiving a separate grant, Partnership for Success, which is about two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars. We have a couple more years on it, and she'll talk about the strategies we're utilizing within that. So that would be this piece, and so annually, you can see across the counties, dollars are not disseminated according to population, it's based on their strategic plans. Those strategic plans should be based on local data, and that should drive their priorities with that. I'd like to talk to you more about how we have furthered prevention within Lancaster County and a statewide piece that's very significant and directly affects Lancaster County. So, first, the suicide prevention piece. As you know, within Nebraska, we're about thirty-sixth in the nation in terms of the lowest suicide rates. We're in the top ten when it comes to youth suicide rates. We had received a Garrett Lee Smith grant some years past, around 2008, we were able to see numbers go down. You can't keep reapplying for that, you have to wait a period of time. We have it now in Nebraska again due to the increase in our suicide rates, youth as well as adult. So each region is getting about sixty-three thousand dollars, and we are really building that infrastructure in terms of taking a look at those suicide prevention funds within Region Five systems. We're utilizing Lancaster County really to be the model, and then we'll fold it out into the rural communities. We've, really, I think we have been good stewards of the funds in terms of signage across, within the garages. We have lost team, which is local, I always call it loved ones surviving suicide, but it's local outreach for suicide survivors. And that is a national movement, little cost, highly effective. The national research shows if someone who lost someone due to suicide gets involved with the local lost team, so it's support with other people that have experienced similar, it's about thirty-nine days, thirty-nine to forty-nine, before they start receiving help for themselves. If they are affected by someone completing suicide, they're at four to six times greater risk of attempting their own life. So it's, it's an important piece. Those that do not get involved with lost teams, it can be four to five years before they start reaching out to get help. That's a long time to be in that grief process without getting assistance. So we're making sure that we're supporting Lancaster, Lincoln specific, really took the lead across the state with the lost team, and they're growing in numbers throughout the state. We want to see that happen, we want to see statewide movement to keep those pieces going. I will also tell you, on a local level within Lancaster County, the coalition, Suicide Coalition, has key stakeholders at the table, and it's, they're really quite progressive in terms of getting things accomplished, they're working with big shots, the company, and we have purchased some gun boxes for security purposes, and hopefully start a trend in terms of people being more specific with that. And then I want to talk to you about within LPS, Lincoln Public Schools, a very basic primary prevention piece that we are supporting through Region Five systems is second step curriculum. And I'll tell you that the teachers, it is now throughout all elementaries within LPS. It's an expensive curriculum, we've put in about a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars to help support. LPS had purchased some, but teachers were having to share it. This is a social, emotional, learning piece that helps the youth, you use it throughout the day, so it's not a curriculum in the sense of module one, module two. They use it throughout the day in terms of kids, helping kids to self-regulate, to feel safe, and to be, become involved and active in their learning process. We're seeing a lot more emotional, anxiety, depression, those kind of things among our younger kids. And so this primary piece, and the fact that the teachers, they love it, and they're buying into it. We will follow the data, look at trends in terms of are they seeing behavior change? Are the emotional disturbances being addressed or minimized with the support of this curriculum and obviously other pieces that are put in place? So, we see that as, as a key piece within Lancaster. I also hope that as we, and that's a hope, but I really see it as a vision, but we're in initial stages, that as we grow that and people begin to see some changes, that we use through the Nebraska Mental Health Association, and it's a national evidence-based program, RAP, a Wellness Recovery Action Plan. It's a very simple tool that helps youth or adult identify. It's basically an eight-page workbook. What, what do I use to cope? Who are my support systems? Because sometimes when they're in such emotional turmoil, they're unable to think that, through that clearly. We're also helping law enforcement to be on top of that and ask folks, particularly if they think there's some more mental health concerns than actual criminal behavior or somebody, do you have a RAP plan? Can you get that out? So we're encouraging people, if it's an adult, keep that in your car, keep it on top of your fridge, where is it readily available? And then in the schools, we will help those youths work with social workers, school personnel with the RAP. I've been researching Utah, and they have Hope Squads. They were second in the nation with highest suicide rates among their youth. School principal began monitoring, he was very concerned about his particular area, and he thought peer-to-peer is what's going to make a difference, and so he initiated Hope Squads. He's put together an incredible curriculum, he's met with my team via video, and I want to bring him into Nebraska so that he can be utilized. In the last four years, they've had zero youth suicide rates. And I think the Hope Squad ties in nicely, not just with the suicide piece, but those kids that are really wanting to have some type of emotional support and connect with the group within the school. So that would be my goal, that we've got this curriculum now within the elementaries, we are moving it into the middle schools, we will look at RAP, and, in fact, LPS is willing, they're going to pilot RAP in a couple of schools. And that's where I see that community-school partnership. Let's pilot it. It doesn't work. If it doesn't, what are our next steps? So I really, I think we're doing a good job of working collaboratively. I do think that's an important piece that I wanted you to be aware of as we see things moving forward. LPS has been great to work with in terms of building that partnership, they're wanting to have more community engagement. We're in initial stages of setting up those meetings to where we're really looking at services available and how to incorporate some of that into their school system, which is just going to be imperative as we continue to drive our prevention efforts. Any, I know that was a lot of questions.
Deb? I'm just surprised at the multifaceted approach you're taking. It seems like we're doing different types of things at different, you know, age points and really interested in that Utah Hope Squad.
Yeah.
That sounds like a really strong program and maybe something that we might be able to replicate here. That zero suicide rate is certainly a, something we need to work toward.
Absolutely. They've actually mandated it across Utah, and now he has several states, but other countries also interested. And he said to us, I really wasn't wanting to get this big. He was glad to serve his state, but he really, so he's very interested. There were a lot of parallels as we talked to him between Utah and Nebraska, and I'll certainly let you know when we get him here, I'll give you an invitation if you'd like to come listen. That'd be great.
That would be great.
Well, I wanted to compliment you on picking up the Utah model, having three grandkids that were involved in that out at Harem in Utah. They did turn that around, and I think that's about the most successful program that I've, I've heard of. What's always disturbed me is why we have so much teenage suicide in Nebraska. Have you come up with any reasons, or several of them, or there's got to be some reasons?
You know, sometimes it's due to relationship issues, sometimes it's due to expectations. Either they feel like, have been placed on them, or they place on themselves. And of course, mental health plays a huge part in that. So you can see how, I think Deb hit it, I mean, we're now at various stages, but really on a federal level, they're really wanting us to make sure with our substance abuse prevention that we are promoting mental health pieces that really tie in together. Substance abuse is so significant with a lot of those cases when it comes to attempts or completion.
Well, alcohol is still the number one drug, and as a former school board member, whatever we can do for education, and it's, it's kind of a gateway drug, it's that, and then that's not enough, so let's take some pills, and then let's just, you know, keep on going. And we've got to start early, and education is clearly our, our best resource. And there is one thing that I am going to chime you a little bit about, you worked with the Lincoln Public Schools, but Lancaster County is a big county, they're eight-hundred-and-sixty square miles, and I'm sure the Norris, Waverly, Malcolm, and Raymond Central districts would love to have that too, because they have missed not having a police or county sheriff person in those classrooms. And fifth, sixth grade is not, not too early to start. And then the suicides that I've seen, it's, and attempted suicides, as a County Commissioner and as a school board member, they, a lot of them have been the loners, the kids that aren't involved, the kids that have been bullied, this sort of type of thing too. So whatever we can do on education, but you're doing a good job, just maybe take a look at serving the rural schools too. I know they're feeling left out because they haven't been able to be part of the learning community for Southeast Community College and some things like that too. So, big county, we're, we're bigger than most counties, most are just twenty-four by twenty-four miles, we're twenty-four by thirty-six, so.
Absolutely.
But Lincoln happens to be in the center, it's a center hub, and, and that's what we all use too, but those other kids need some help too.
I appreciate your comments. You'll find as we talk further, we definitely have not left out the rural, and they are on board.
Oh, sure, they'll want to be a part of it.
So, thank you.
But I really wanted to also say thank you very much for that. I, I have been a former educator, and I remember back in my own, when I was teaching, that there were two youths that, who committed suicide, and it was really a shock for everything. And you know, as I, as I look at things, and I've also worked with the, with the model that they used in Peer-to-Peer, this was with young adults, Peer-to-Peer in New York City, and that was really among the police officers and their families. And so basically, it comes down to, you know, just a lot of substance abuse, suicide, the lack of support, and that they need the support centers and the stresses that are placed upon them, not only by themselves, but oftentimes, by sometimes the people who are supposed to be supportive.
Absolutely. We are trained now, my staff, and then we're building a cadre for Question Persuade Refer, and we're doing one and a half hour training. We don't even have to advertise it, we do one train, we've done all the UNL Police, Norris is actually want us to work with their entire staff. LPS as, well, and Lancaster at large, actually across the state through the Department of Education, they are required to do an online training for suicide prevention. It's cognito, and then they're adding a piece to it this year. So we have that, and then we're doing mental health first aid, adult and youth. So our educational pieces are strong. I'm always surprised at how much, to me it seems, I know I've been in the field a long time, basic information, but I'm surprised how many people are just shocked and come up and say, oh my gosh, you know, surprised with the information. I know that as of August fifteenth of this year, we had twenty-six completions of suicide and hundred-and-eighty-four attempts.
Wow.
And that's just what we know of, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah.
Well, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Teri Voski, Coordinator for the Lancaster Prevention Coalition. So Sandy and I work together, but Lancaster is my purview, so, and I'll let you know, it's an exciting time for us, we're in year four of the Partners for Success Grant, which comes down from the Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health folks and through the feds. With this money, we've been charged with increasing family communication around alcohol use for youth twelve to twenty years old. So, some of the materials we gave you, this Talk About Alcohol site and resource pieces were created the very first years of the grant as a way to help parents understand how important it is to talk to their kids and have a conversation and share expectations about alcohol use. It talks to them about their parenting styles, gives them tools, how they can tweak their style to be more effective when they're talking to their youth, and there's lots of good information in here. So I shared this with you because we just updated the statistics, the data in here, so with the newest data, so that's new this year. There is a brochure that goes with this and a website that we have been sharing with the community, and actually that's been going outside of Lancaster County now. We have interest from the counties surrounding us to be involved with that. So the exciting part is that allows us to share prevention and substance abuse resources in the counties that surround Lancaster. So, still a Lancaster-based piece. The other exciting thing about the Talk About Alcohol phase, we're now translating this into Spanish, so materials and the website will have Spanish for non-English speakers, Spanish speakers. And we're adding a piece called the Youth Alcohol Profile. This is modeled after UNL's College Alcohol Profile, if you're familiar with that, targeted to our demographic, the twelve to twenty-year-olds, and probably more to the high schoolers. But they will be able to get in, answer some questions about their alcohol use, how many do they use, how much do they use, when do they use, and then it will feed back to them a personal report that they can either keep, do it privately, keep to themselves, or maybe in conjunction with an agency or an educational facility that would use this as a guide in their educational piece, and so then that could be shared as a class and used as a learning tool. So, other strategies that we're using in Lancaster County right now through the PFS Grant, we're very excited to be focusing on the CMCA, and I never quite get this fit out, it's Communities Mobilizing for Change on Alcohol. It's exciting because we are reaching out to the community now to do the one-hundred interviews that it requires to collect the data from people who are not involved with our community groups, to find out what they see as the shortcomings, the gaps, and the strengths in our community in Lancaster County. So from that thematic data that we gather, we will then look at this as a coalition and decide where it is that we can step in and make change regarding policy, make some environmental change. So it's bringing the community groups together, groups that have traditionally worked within their little microcosm within Lancaster County, and we're coming together to get behind a piece, and it really is, like I said, an exciting time. Other things that we're using within the Partners for Success Grant to address family communication is creating lasting family connections. These are parenting classes, and we have partnerships with the Spanish-speaking community and the Asian Center to have, we have trainers that are actually training this peer-to-peer. ESPOR, which is Screening and Brief Intervention Tool, we're going to roll that out this year, do a training. Love and Logic is being offered through Raymond Central Schools. We have an educator out there, a couple educators who are very passionate about Love and Logic have been trained, we've supported, supported that with the grant, and so she's offering those classes. All Stars is done at Raymond and Malcolm, and then I think it's used also within LPS a little bit, and that's kind of a junior high, middle school, forgive me, a middle school curriculum.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, like I mentioned before, Communities Mobilizing for Change on Alcohol. So those are the strategies we're using within the PFS Grant. I did also put inside your book kind of a synopsis of what I just shared with you, and an informational piece about the Communities Mobilizing for Alcohol, so you can see for yourself. Have any questions?
I do want to mention too, that with TalkAboutAlcohol.org, Teri did a great job letting you know what we're doing. It is, it's costly, and part of our intent with that site, we have parents not coming to trainings that we're putting out or educational pieces, I mean, it's at a minimum. Rural counties think, oh, I'm sure you get tons of people in Lancaster because of the population. It's no different in Lancaster than in rural counties. So, part of the site is working with Agent, they have been our lead marketing, and they, even our videos, when we have trainings, we video it. Parents could see it in their own time and their own space. We're hoping it will grow after, we've got two more years on this grant, that it'll increase not just about alcohol, we'll continue to build on that, right, and the communication within families. However, we will grow it to include other drugs, other concerns, the suicide piece can fit in nicely. We're hoping to sustain it, I don't want those dollars just included, and then once the grant's over, it dies. We're going to really market it with other counties around the state. It would be minimal cost to the coalitions in terms of maintaining that site and everyone feeling like they have a part in it, which would also help with advertisement of the Hope Squads, RAP, national resources, statewide resources, regional, local. So I do think, you know, we've been in just a little over a decade with prevention, and I do think now it's, which is not much, that's really infancy when you think of tobacco prevention, how long it took. And so I do see community mobilizing, and I think that's going to be a really nice tool that can be well utilized. And our Sharp Survey comes up this fall, meaning all the schools will be taking that, LPS is on board, eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders every other year, and that's the other piece of data that will help drive some of what we're doing.
Okay. Well, thank you so very much for all your involvement and what you have done, you're doing a great job here in the county, and we really appreciate that. And you've utilized those dollars very, very wisely, and you've got a great vision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work.
Next is number four, new business, resolution authorizing installation of a school bus stop ahead sign on West McKelvey Road, five hundred feet east of seventy-two twenty-five West McKelvey Road for westbound traffic in Lancaster County.
Move approval, a lot of requests for this sign.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve this installation, the resolution authorizing installation of a school bus stop ahead. Any discussion?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I did bring an exhibit of where we're going to install the sign. This is one of those sign installations that was requested, there's really not a site distance problem here, but we, and we did go out and verify that, but we feel that if the school district requests the sign, and they did request this one, that, that we should go ahead and put the sign up. And, you know, my department will err on the safety of the children.
Absolutely.
And, and there are many, many parents and people that use this road that, that aren't parents. that are more worried about it too, so.
Okay, well, please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. B is liability insurance coverage with the National League Legal Aid and Defender Association Service Corporation for the Lancaster County Public Defender's Office in amount of six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. The policy begins November first, two thousand and sixteen, for a period of twelve months.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the liability insurance coverage. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four C is a grant contract with Lighthouse, Inc., in amount of twenty thousand dollars providing funding for restorative justice program through the contract as July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for Lincoln Lancaster County. And this contract is part of that funding that comes down through the state, it's community eight dollars appropriated through the legislature, it's based on the juvenile population that we have in our county. This funding would specifically allow for our kids to attend Lighthouse. While Lighthouse is currently a program that's been up and operating for several years, they have not been able to have the restorative justice piece incorporated into their daily program. So this specific programming, this specific funding would allow for them to hire a part-time restorative justice coordinator to build in those restorative justice principles. Restorative justice meaning bringing the victim, the offender and the community together to repair the harm that was done during the commission of a crime.
Okay. She answered my question before I asked it about a little bit more explanation about the restorative justice principles, because we use that term a lot and just to make sure it's clear that what the principles are. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Lighthouse, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D is our change orders to county contract C dash sixteen dash two sixty-eight with Constructors, Inc., for a decrease in amount of one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, deleting six tenths of a mile of overlay on Hallam Road, and an increase of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents, adding one mile of overlay on South Fortieth Street.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this year, as we're doing our asphalt, we discovered that in the Hallam area, we have a couple of very bad storm pipes, which would be easy enough to dig up and replace, except for we need a Corps of Engineers permit in order to do that. So, once we discovered the pipes were bad, we applied for the Corps permit, we still have not got it, and we are nearing the end of the asphalt season. So that is the reason for the deduct of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And you can actually see on our map where we have the little half mile that we have left out because I do not want to pave over pipes that we know are bad. So we'll come back and get that piece next year. But in addition to that, as you may remember, we closed South Fortieth Street north of Saltillo and between Rockabye last year because under the excessive heat, the slab disintegrated. And that slab is failing. It is in this current year's budget to do it, but I feel we need to do it now to stabilize it through the winter. So we're deducting the Hallam piece and we're adding the South Fortieth piece. And in addition to that, I just want to say, we are going to close that road, should you approve this change order, so that we can overlay it without it being under traffic. There is a lot of traffic in this area and I would like to remind the public that the sign, the road's closed, means the road is closed. And we have asked for some additional enforcement from the Sheriff's Department in that area.
Do you have any idea how long it will be closed as a result of this project?
You know, it's milling and overlaying, so I'm hoping that we can be in and out of there in less than five days.
Okay.
But that being said, we have not been lucky this year with rain. And, you know, we are behind in the construction season because we keep getting those every three or four day rain events and we kind of have to wait for things to dry out and start over, so.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve these change orders to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is a change order to county contract C dash sixteen dash five sixty-nine with Hawkins Construction for an increase of eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars survived for demolition of a house within the right-of-way.
So you may recall, this is the Rockabye project between eighty-fourth and ninety-eighth. All the costs incurred with this project are being paid by LES through the inter-local agreement between LES, the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. So this is a change order to their contract to do demolition of a home that is within the new right-of-way, and it is at no cost to the county.
Larry.
Has LES already purchased the home or settled with the landowners?
LES does own the property.
They do own the property, okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this change order to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. F is a contract with TAB Products Company, LLC to provide the annual supply of district court file folders. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. Cost to county is not to exceed three thousand and seventy dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract with TAB Products Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is amendment to county contract C dash sixteen dash four one eight between the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County for improvement of Rockabye Road between the South eighty-fourth and to ninety-eighth street and a portion of South ninety-first street.
Is Pam still here? I would have asked her a question about it. Maybe Deb knows it's probably in your district.
Actually, that's in my district, yeah, and I'm not sure, yeah.
Is there any questions that I can answer on?
Yeah, here's Pam.
You have a question for me?
Yeah, this is, if you would explain the, show us where or discuss the improvement on Rockabye Road between South eighty-fourth to ninety-eighth street.
What it is.
Yeah.
Oh, between South eighty-fourth and ninety-eighth street. The improvement is to grade Rockabye Road and then to install a modified rut section as defined by the City of Lincoln, which is a suburban section with a raised island and sixteen feet of pavement on each side of that island.
And the portion of ninety-first street, pretty much the same things?
That is correct.
And this is all part of this LES project again that they're paying for?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about.
Move approval, that's what we needed to know.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. H is an amendment to county contract C dash sixteen dash three eighty-one with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company for the annual supply of John Deere fielders SS twenty-six. Amendment renews the contract from August twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen through August twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Higher amendments to the following contracts for annual requirement of asphaltic concrete. The amendment extends the contracts from November second, two thousand and sixteen through November first, two thousand and seventeen. The estimated cost of all the contracts is not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. This includes county contract C dash fifteen dash five forty-five with Catherson's Construction, Inc., county contract C dash fifteen dash five forty-six with Constructors, Inc., and county contract C dash fifteen dash five forty-four with Pavers, Inc.
Move approval.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve these amendments. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. J is an amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash five forty-nine with Company Care for Employee Medical Exams. The amendment renews the contract from November fifth, two thousand and sixteen through November fourth, two thousand and seventeen. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four K is an amendment to county contract C dash fifteen dash five twenty between Vigilant America, LLC using the Johnson County, Kansas, RFP two thousand and fourteen one one eight for electronic monitoring equipment and services. The amendment increases the expenditure for Lancaster County by four thousand dollars with revised contract total for this term not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. L is an amendment to county contract C dash sixteen dash seventy-eight with Language Line Services, Inc., using the State of Nebraska contract number four eight eight six zero oh four for language interpretation services. The amendment renews the contract from August first, two thousand and sixteen through July thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number five are consent items. Receive and place on file a letter from Lincoln Electric System regarding the First Amendment to County Contract C dash sixteen dash four one eight between Lancaster County and the City of Lincoln for improvement of Rockabye Road eighty-fourth to ninety-eighth street and a portion of South ninety-first street. Utility permit number fourteen eighty-seven, Land and Windstream, Nebraska, Inc., to install underground utilities adjacent to Van Dorn Street west of one hundred and ninetieth Street. There is no cost to county. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and Sunset Ridge Farms, LLC, Rockabye Road, South eighty-fourth Street through South ninety-eighth Street, in a total amount of forty-three thousand, forty dollars. Setting a public hearing on Tuesday, November first, two thousand and sixteen at nine AM in room one twelve of the County City Building regarding an amendment to Article One, Section Six of the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards to Modify Emission Fees for Regulated Air Pollutants.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
And I think you can move on to announcements.
Announcements. Number seven, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October twentieth, two thousand and sixteen at eight thirty AM in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen at nine AM in room one twelve of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen at nine AM in room one twelve of the County City Building regarding county changes zone numbers one six zero two six from AG Agricultural District to AGR Agricultural Residential District on property generally located at South Sixtieth Street and Wentzbrook Road. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November first, two thousand and sixteen at six thirty PM in room one twelve of the County City Building regarding the one and six-year road and bridge improvement program. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live and is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel Five. In addition, a meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE dot gov under Five City TV Video, Five City TV Video on Demand or Five City TV on YouTube.
Hey, Mr. Clerk, I think that there will, excuse me, we do need to make one correction and you were not aware of this when we began. We just found out that we will not have a quorum on Thursday. So we will not have a staff meeting on Thursday, October twentieth.
Okay.
Okay? So just so that the public knows that. So when we, that needs to be changed.
And.
Okay.
I will, those are the announcements. Move adjournment.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, and let's move on to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed today's open meetings available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Also in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the County Assessor's Office. Agenda item one are minutes, approve the minutes to the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October eleventh, two thousand and sixteen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I would move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the additions and deductions. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Shore.